Good evening. I would like to call to order the Norwood City School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, September the 19th. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bimonthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Rarika.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
If you would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04 is the adoption of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes. All right, with the agenda adopted, we can move on. 1.05, these are the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on August the 7th. 1.06, these are the Finance Committee meeting minutes from September the 10th. 1.07, committee meeting minutes from September the 10th. That's it? Do I have a motion to approve 1.05 through 1.07?
Motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, moving on on the agenda. Item two, this is our presentation section. And Superintendent, Mrs. Ronan will be talking to us about back to school this year.
Thank you, Madam President. I have some highlights that I would, from the opening of school, that I would like to share with everyone. Schools started on Monday, August 18th, for students, but our staff members were there. They were present the week before for professional development and getting their classrooms ready for the arrival of students. All of our schools hosted a family information night to meet their teachers and have parents see the classrooms, and that was the Thursday and Friday before school started. On the first day of school, our students were greeted by the Reds mascots. Mr. Redlegs, Rosie Reds, and the Gapper were all here. Mr. Richardson, our A.D., has friends in the Reds organization, so the mascots graciously spend the first morning of the new school year greeting our students as they return. Our administrative team also made sure that everything was ready to go on day one. Another plus for the start of the school year was the reopening of the newly renovated Shea Stadium. The stadium has new turf, a new track, new lighting, a new scoreboard, new paint, air conditioning in the locker rooms. It's been over 20 years since the last renovation. And we do have a billboard featuring the ribbon cutting that features all of our Board of Education on the billboard above the mound. And last Friday, we celebrated Wyatt Hinton's receiving the state championship ring out on our new turf field. Sharpsburg students, they returned to a beautiful new playgrounds at both the primary and elementary buildings. Plus, in addition, an outdoor classroom is part of our landscape and playground beautification project. The Sharpsburg Alumni Association donated playground equipment to complement the new playgrounds. Well, we also fixed up our gaga pits because it's a favorite of students. We put some turf in them at Norwood View, Williams, and at Sharpsburg. You know, our homecoming football game is scheduled for tomorrow night against St. Bernard, and we're fortunate that we have a partnership with Blessed With Dress, and they provide outfits to defray the cost of the homecoming dance event. And that's, I believe, in the lobby of the high school where students could choose items they needed. We're also fortunate to participate in Hubbard's cupboard again this year. They bring school supplies for students in cooperation with crayons, the computers, and I think that's Sam there in the van. We are in, gosh, week five of the first quarter, and academic instruction is moving forward at a brisk pace. These are pictures from grade one at Sharpsburg. The students are reading their favorite books to the stuffed animals who they use as their reading buddies. And that picture was taken in our new outdoor classroom. So the academic year is off to a smooth start. We also received our state report card. From last year, we received three and a half stars overall, which means Norwood met state standards. Now, Mrs. Chesson is going to go over the details at the October committee meeting, since many of our schools exceeded state standards. So we all look forward to that in October. So thank you, and that concludes our opening report. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Ronan. All right, item three on the agenda, this is personnel, so I'm going to be turning it right back over to Mrs. Ronan.
Well, thank you very much. All right. I am back on with 3.01, employment. Under that, we have an employment of an exempt employee, and that is, we're hiring John as our attendance and student accounts coordinator because he is replacing Mitch, who resigned in August. So I'm going to stop there because I think we need a vote on it.
Do I have a motion to approve 3.01?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote. Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Abstain. Okay, Mrs. Ronan.
All right, item number two, employment. We would like to welcome some new student assistants and ed aides who are going to be working with our students this year. Also, right under that box, we have avenues for success, and these are the teachers who are working in our grade after-school program. We also, under that, have some supplementals, and these are for teachers serving as mentors for new staff members and also who host our student clubs. And that is continued on the next page. Then, under item number two, that's where we hired our non-certified coaches and advisors. As you can see, we've got pupil activity contracts for fall and winter sports listed there, and also as a site sub for our avenues for success program. So I'm going to stop for a board vote right here.
Do I have a motion to approve section three? I guess it's 3.01, sub-items two and three. Did you group four in there as well?
Yes, it is two and three.
Two and three.
Two and three.
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Now, as we continue in the employment section, under avenues for success, these are the non-certified staff working in our after-school program. Then, item number three, this is for staff who change positions, so that's why you see it listed as a change in status. Item number four, that is the new science of reading program from the state of Ohio that the governor has championed, and this gives the treasurer permission to distribute the stipends that we get from the state to the teachers who take the training. So I'm going to stop right here for another board vote.
Do I have a motion to approve avenues for success, the change in status, and the science of reading stipend?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I will be abstaining from this vote. Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Abstain.
All right, the next section, 3.02, are resignations, and we do have several, actually, three individuals leaving us for other employment. So there is another voting box right after the resignations.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignations?
Motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, then, in 3.03, what this is, it's an amendment to the supplemental schedule of the Norwood Teachers Association contract to pay a stipend for the Hope Squad at the middle school. We have one at the high school, but we did not have a paid position at the middle school. So if you're in agreement with it, NTA is in agreement with it, it'll be an addendum to the supplemental salary schedule of the contract.
Do I have a motion to approve 3.03?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. I thought Hope Squad was changing their structuring, and then we were possibly going to look at additional supports.
That's what this is. Yes, you are correct. They are not in existence anymore, so we'd like to continue with the Hope Squad, and they used to pay for the middle school advisor, but since they've dissolved.
Right.
So this is to allow us to continue at the middle school. We may change the name of it because they may not actually let us use their name anymore.
Have we done any further follow-up with the organization that I sent you information with previously?
I have not. I apologize for that, but we will, because if that works out, this person would be the coordinator with that organization. But right now, we don't have anything.
Okay, I'd like to get on that as soon as possible because I knew that transitioned, but a lot of those folks are being utilized to come in and supplement for this type of program.
For this type of program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I was going to say, I was glad, I thought that, like, I even heard a story on NPR or something, that they had disbanded, and then I saw the teacher who was in charge of it, and she's like, yes, but apparently it's still at the regional level, it was still going, it was just the national, and I was like, oh, I was so confused. She's like, nope, we're still going, so I was like, all right.
So that's interesting. I did not know that. So the national dissolved, but the regional hasn't.
I might have said that wrong, so don't quote me.
Well, it's okay. I just know, I don't think we're getting a stipend anymore, so we're having to pick it up.
Well, I'm glad we're going to continue it. I just want to make sure we're following up on the correct thing so that we don't get in any hot water or drop that program because it's a very good program.
No, exactly.
But I want to see us do a little bit more with it.
My kids stayed after school yesterday for a two-hour class on how to teach other kids about anti-vaping, so they are doing it, so.
Anything further?
No, that concludes my personnel report. Thank you.
Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, with that approved, we can move on to item four on the agenda. This is our education committee report, and I will turn this over to Mrs. Rarika.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a memorandum of understanding for Head Start and also another one for Tabert House. These are the things we put out that just say we intend on working with these organizations. And then we also have our field trips, which I just love. The high school going to Children's Hospital, Sharpsburg going to Camp Camel Guard, middle school, Washington, D.C., woo-woo, and the high school marching band going to Indianapolis, Williams Avenue Elementary, Green Acres Children's Theater, Taft Theater, Norwood View, also going to Green Acres and Camp Kern. So I make a motion that we accept our MOUs and our field trips.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, item five on the agenda, this is our policy committee, and we have no policies this month, so we can move on to item six, which is building and grounds, and I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a couple requests for facility usage. The first is for Christmas Town to use the Norwood Middle School parking lot and Field House on Friday, December 6th, for their setup and use for the event on Saturday, December 7th. The second request is from the New City Presbyterian Church Men's Football Event. They'd like to use the Shea Stadium field on Saturday, November 16th, or November 23rd, and that will be dependent on our A.D. I'd like to make a motion that we approve both requests as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, with that approved, we can move on to item seven. This is our finance committee report, so I will turn it over to our treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. Monthly financials, the CFO report and change order listings are on the agenda for your review. 7.02 is an appropriation resolution, our budget for the current year. 7.03, to set sub rates for our contracted teaching subs, we are setting pay for their daily rates. 7.04, board approval to open a checking account. In order to facilitate our new FSA vendors funds, we will need a new checking account. 7.05, resolution declaring transportation impractical. We have two parents request transportation to private schools, which is outside of our district, it is impractical for us to provide transportation. 7.06, approve gas and electric suppliers, to approve gas and electric purchasing agreements to coincide with our current agreements. 7.07, every child succeeds agreement, our annual agreement paid for with Ready School funding. 7.08, contract with Kimberly-Cutrell, to approve a contract to provide limited technical services for marketing and other printed and virtual needs. 7.09, fiscal year grants, to approve our 21st Century Grant of $700,000 for the current school year. 7.10, then and now purchase orders, just a few purchase orders needing further approval due to the fiscal cutoff. 7.11, capital improvement budget, attached is our capital improvement budget that I get approved every fall. 7.12, Shea Stadium substantial completion. This is the substantial completion for Shea's remodel, including Mozart's substantial completion for the track, the scoreboard, and gray box project on the stadium itself. 7.13, Sharpsburg substantial completion, to approve the substantial completion of Sharpsburg's beautification project. And finally, 7.14, Williams Avenue Elementary beautification plan, to approve the plan presented at the community meeting last week and the associated budget to go along with it.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the finance committee, 7.01 through 7.14?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm really happy about the sub-pay raise, and also, I just love these beautification projects. I don't know if anybody wants an explanation, but when we passed the levy, it made a bucket of continuous improvement money. That money's been growing, and so we took that money and did these beautification projects. It's not money that came out of nowhere, it's very purposeful. It's very wonderful that the levy has these parts to it, and I love explaining it. Because Julie's so good at telling me about it.
And we love getting them done. They look fantastic. I think Sharpsburg looks fantastic.
And I had somebody say, like, thank you for telling us. Sharpsburg looks amazing. I love that they have tetherball. I'm hoping Williams also gets a tetherball.
We already told them we had to have tetherball. We have to have tetherball, have to kickball. Don't take our gaga pits. We know what our priorities are.
We got them.
Little more green space where we can fit it in.
That's right.
Get less heat going there, and more trees bringing up that geothermal coolness.
And I like that we'll have a spot for our parents to be able to hang out during drop-off and pickup times. That's a safe space, and that they'll have actual physical drop-off zones that they can pull into.
All of our back doors will be gated, fenced. I think that's very important.
It'll be so nice.
Yep.
Anything further? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, item eight on the agenda is the hearing of the public. I do not have any papers with me today, so I will move on to item nine. This is the report section, 9.01, board announcements. So I will open it up if any board member has anything they would like to share.
I'll say, I accidentally happened upon the Blessed With Dress thing and ended up staying all day, and it was really, really fun. And the kids had so much fun. And they were really well behaved, and the lady in charge said that apparently last year they were not. And so she was super, super, super happy and very, what's the word when you say nice things about other people?
Complimentary.
Good job. Very complimentary about how our kids were this year. She was just blown away at how nice our kids are.
Fantastic.
And I had a really good time.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on. 9.02, this is our superintendent report, so I will turn it over to Mrs. Ronan.
Well, what I have this evening is the latest enrollment totals. We did see an influx of students coming in after Labor Day, so our enrollment does seem to have stabilized. At pre-K to 12, we have 1,764 students, which really tracks with what we had last year at this time. But I wanted you to have this detailed report of where everyone is. And I didn't know if there was any questions, but like I said, it does look like enrollment is stabilizing.
Does that usually happen that we get?
It does. Unfortunately, I think people still think back in the day that school starts after Labor Day, but it really hasn't. It started before Labor Day for the past 20 or 30 years.
Yeah, it's been a while.
But we still, yes, we still get an influx, especially in kindergarten and the younger grades.
Oh, yeah, because they probably don't, yeah.
They don't realize that.
They just don't know, yeah.
It'd be nice if it was holiday to holiday, it just kind of makes sense, but.
Yeah, you're right. We get out on Memorial Day, so they think we don't start till after Labor Day, so you're right. But all districts now start a lot earlier in August.
Right. And that's a nationwide problem. I know.
It's to compensate for the change in scheduling for teachers throughout the year to give more breaks and things like that, so I get it, but it's weird.
1999 and 2000, I was teaching in Cleveland, and this same exact thing was talked about. The kids won't show up till after Labor Day, so.
I know, they missed the first two weeks of school, which, you know, you hate to see that.
Right.
But that's all I have, but.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ronan. 9.03, this is our Grade Oaks report, so I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We also went over enrollment numbers for the school year. We have a 25% increase overall since 2019, and we have 88 more students than last year's enrollment at a total of 3,024. We are currently at capacity in all classroom offerings, so we'll see how we hold on to that. But the fact that we are growing is really good indication of improvements for technical education. The other project update that we've got, we are also doing a lot of construction projects in our district. We just finished most of our renovations at two of our campuses, and next week, we're actually going to be doing a ground break, or not a ground breaking, a ribbon cutting on Monday, the 23rd, at one of our campuses, and I think the, excuse me, Live Oaks Campus, and the lieutenant governor is supposed to be there to help with that next week. We are going to be, I'm trying to think here, oh, no, excuse me, it's at Laurel Oaks. We did live in the spring, and that was the one that we finished, and Laurel Oaks is on Monday. We've also added a couple of new committees to the district that are going to help with evaluating our CTE programs and basically the curriculum director type role, but to really evaluate the work side more so than the curriculum side, so that we're meeting industry standards and credentialing. So that's going to go hand in hand with our curriculum growth, so that we're meeting industry standards and kind of beating them, because we're adding in several new programs, including EV, which is the start of what the new construction's going to be at our new campus. The other thing that we mentioned, we have our Southwest Regional Meeting coming up on October 10th, and that will be up at our Laurel Oaks Campus as well. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. 9.04, this is Norwood Community Television, which is my committee. I do have an update from Tyler. He says they've been working with IT and our A.D. to get the gym and stadium ready to cover sports. Huddle has been covering sports by itself for the last year or so. He said, and now they can take the feed from Huddle, add our own cameras to it, along with the announcers and the audio from the stadium. And then the control room upstairs has a computer that supplies the feed for the monitors at the concession stand, and then they're going to be doing that soon here for the games at the high school gym, so that will be coming soon. He says these changes allow us to stream sports on Facebook as well as YouTube, and he said they are expanding their productions as we go. So that's the news for NCT for the month. 9.05, this is our OSBA Legislative Liaison, so I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard again.
Thank you, Madam President. The things that mostly have been coming from the state have been recommendations that we all participate in the Stay in the Game Attendance Awareness Month for September. It's a nationwide program recognizing connections between school attendance and academic achievement, so they're hoping that each school participates in setting those goals and providing activities and benchmarks for students to prioritize attendance. There also, we also just finished our flag meeting in D.C., which is the federal legislative. I'm the alternate for that. I didn't have to attend because both of our regulars were able to attend, but they just came back from that and said they were able to meet with a couple of our House representatives as well as a few senators while they were in D.C. to talk about career tech education as well as home districts and things that are going on at the national level. I have not received that report yet because they just got back last week, but as soon as I have that report, I will hopefully have some national news to tell you. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ballard. 9.06, this is avenues for success, and I will ask Mrs. Rarika to give us an update.
Thank you, Madam President. Our Super Fun Clubs that we have every year will be starting up October 14th, and right now, Laura Ferguson is organizing those and taking from staff members proposals for after-school clubs until September 20th. So I can't wait to see what they come up with, because it's always something really fun. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Rarika. Item 10 on the agenda, this is our meeting notifications for next month. So our meetings next month will be Tuesday, October 8th at 6:00 p.m., will be the committee meeting in the Board of Education office on Williams, and then our regular meeting will be Thursday, October 17th at 6:00 p.m. here in the high school mini. Do I have a motion to approve the future meetings as listed?
All motions?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Now, we all look forward to having our students and parents back with us at the meeting.
We'll have star awards.
Rising star awards. Anything else?
Are we going to be continuing the sports awards? And I hope the arts awards.
Fine arts.
I'd like to, I'd like to make the fine arts thing a regular, because we did that a couple times last year, but we had so many.
It's at every meeting.
Yeah, I think we didn't do it the first few meetings, but I want to make sure we're going to continue it this year.
Anything else? All right, Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Rarika?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
All right, item 11 on the agenda, this is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The time is 6:33, and we are adjourned. Thank you.